Okay, thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, I want to confirm we have a form of 167 registered voters from the town of Abington at the time of 7:10 PM. Without hearing any objection, I'll waive the reading of the warrant and the constable's return. For the record, the vote of selectmen in the town of Abington called this annual town meeting, and they've issued their warrants. Warrants have been posted, notes have been delivered, while resident voters with homes within the town bylaws, this annual town meeting starting at 7:10 PM, and call this meeting to order. At this time, I'd like to recognize and welcome the chairperson of the board of selectmen, Mr. Alex Bezanson, and Abington resident Jack Bailey. Please step forward. Mr. Bailey will have the honor of leading our pledge of allegiance this evening, and we ask that you please then remain standing after the pledge for a moment of silence to be led by Mr. Bezanson.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moderator would like to recognize Chairman Board of Selectmen Alex Bezanson.
This year, we remember Abington residents that have passed Walter Vogel, Maitri Chitam, George Cook, Howard Collin, Jr., Joseph Eisenman, Madeline Irene Gerberchi, Caitlin McCarthy, Richard Chip Munsey, Catherine Leary, Clayton Stone, and my dear friend Russell A. Wheatley. Thank you. I'd also like to read one other thing. Thank you. This year's annual report is dedicated to Jack Bailey and the St. Patrick's Day Parade Committee. With the help of his dedicated parade committee volunteers, Mr. Jack Bailey, AKA St. Patrick, has been organizing the annual St. Patrick's Day Parade for 42 years, bringing joy and pride to our town, and lots of share marks and candy for kids and adults along the way. Jack and his wife Kathy and parade committee volunteers work together to raise private donations each year to pay for the parade expenses, and residents from surrounding towns come to Abington to enjoy the festivities. As a proud lifelong resident of Abington, Jack plays the role of St. Patrick each year, and at the end of the parade, sharing good wishes and Irish blessings to all who attend the parade. The annual St. Patrick's Day Parade is a wonderful tradition for the families to enjoy each year, and yet another reason why our town is such a wonderful community to reside in. Thank you, Jack.
Thank you, Mr. Bezanson, and thank you, Mr. Bailey. Mr. Bailey had no idea that that was about to happen, so that's why he invited him to lead the pledge of allegiance. Thank you again for that, too, Jack. Welcome to this annual town meeting of April 3, 2023. My name is Sean Riley, and I'm the town moderator. Town meetings have been held here in Abington since the early 1700s. Historians have described an open town meeting as one of the purest examples of democracy, where resident voters are welcome to gather together as a legislative body to exchange ideas and different points of view, to approve the town bylaws and budget, to vote with their heart and conscience in the best interest of their family and their town. Whether this is your first time attending our town meeting, or if you're a regular attendee, we welcome all of you, and we thank you for your participation. At this time, I'd like to recognize a special guest who was able to join us tonight, all the way from Washington, D.C. We always like to have the opportunity of our Congressman, Mr. Stephen Lynch, to say a few words to update us on what's going on in Washington for the benefit of all of us here in Abington. Ladies and gentlemen, please welcome Congressman Stephen Lynch.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I absolutely appreciate the courtesy. It's great to be back from Washington. Normally, on Monday nights, I'm in Washington, D.C., but they've developed us out on probation this week to reconnect with local communities, to also to give a brief update, and I'd like to do that right now. First of all, we've got the final tally on the federal relief from both the CARES Act and the American Rescue Plan Act. It was $2.6 million to the town of Abington from the first COVID relief package, and then another $1.64 million from the American Rescue Plan. And it was great to hear that our town officials immediately put those funds to good use. I understand that we used that little over $4 million to repair several of the athletic fields around town that I used by boys and girls, used forcefully, and upgrading the generator at the senior center so it might be used as a community center during heat waves or power outages, and also provided for much-needed maintenance work on various town buildings. Those are all projects that helped improve the quality of life for Abington residents, and exactly what the country funding was meant to address. As I'm sure you're all aware, the Biproducts and Infrastructure Law was signed last year and was continuing to receive the funding delivered across the nation. There was $8.5 billion targeted for the Comball in Massachusetts out of the $1.2 trillion overall. And at that time, I was a member of the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee when we put that bill through, and very proud to work with the administration in terms of making sure that priority projects were identified and that the money was well spent. Since last year, our state has received about $2 billion in funding. The MBTA made an individual appropriation of about $1 billion directly to the chief because of the problems that they were having. Some of that money was used right here in Abington. There were several different intersections that we were ready to address in talking with town manager Lambease, and we identified the intersections of Route 138, the Project 1, Route 18, and Route 123, as well as upgrading all the pedestrian and bicycle routes and reconstructing different roadways to provide additional safety and travel space for residents and commuters. And also, we have a new funding initiative in Washington that was introduced last year. Rather than just simply giving money to the governors and then hoping for the best, we have what they call priority projects, also called earmarks. So the way it works now is that if I work with our town moderator and our voter selectmen here in Abington, we can actually identify priority projects to steer that federal money. So I had an opportunity to meet with the town manager, with my staff, also Alex Bezanson and members of the board of selectmen, to identify a bridge project. Alex, what's the name of the bridge?
Memorial Bridge.
Memorial Bridge project. So it's very high on my priority list, so I think there's a really good chance that we'll get enough money to get that project moved forward. And I know my colleagues, Senator Keenan and Representative Sullivan, will be working on it. There's a, I think, a 10% match on some of this funding. So I know they have both been working hard to make sure that the state comes up with their matching portion. So working together, town officials, federal officials, and state officials will get that project done sooner rather than later. So I just want to, I know you've got a lot of important things to talk about tonight, but I just wanted you to know what an honor it is for me to represent the town of Abington in the United States Congress. I, look, this town has got it all going on. You're a shining example of what's best about America. You can tell a lot about a town by the way it treats its senior citizens, its veterans and its kids. And you see the youth programs, you see the way our veterans officer handles cases, whether you're a World War II veteran that has never had to rely on VA services, or you're, you know, a young returning veteran from Iraq or Afghanistan. The town of Abington recognizes the value of that service and is incredibly loyal to our sons and daughters in uniform that return. And as well, the youth programs, the sports programs, the way the high school is so focused on the development of our young people, that's really a shining example of what's best about America, and it's all right here in Abington. So thank you very, very much for the honor of representing you in Washington, D.C. Thank you also for being involved in town meeting. This is really where the rubber meets the road. This is where it all happens, and it's my job to make sure that the priorities that you reflect here and the concerns that you express here at town meeting are heard in Washington, D.C. And it's my honor to make sure that that message is delivered. So thank you very much. God bless you all, and have a great town meeting. Thank you.
We'll be using some of the available technology that's built into this auditorium tonight. We'll try to display each article as we address them. However, please note that the printed warrant is the official warrant and contains the article, so if there's any discrepancies between the content on your warrant and what appears on the screen, the language in the warrant and the stated motions will control those otherwise noted. And hopefully, everyone has grabbed a copy of the warrant, and the budget is attached as the last couple of pages to your warrant. Please allow me to introduce our town clerk, Leanne Adams, who is seated to my right. Our town council, Greg Corville of K.P. Law, is seated right in front of me. Seated to my left are the members of the Abington Finance Committee. The FINCOM is comprised of Abington residents who volunteer to review and analyze each article, which is to be voted here at town meeting. The current members of the Finance Committee are Greg Belizarian, Marty Belightley, Paul Hagerty, Andrew Leverall, Chris Murphy, Sarah Pohl, Barbara Ray, Matt Sala, and together with the chairman of the FINCOM, Dan Eddy. Dan will be speaking tonight throughout the evening to offer the motions on most of tonight's warrant articles. I'd also like to welcome our town manager, Mr. Scott Lambease, who is seated next to town council. Mr. Lambease and our town department heads have worked very hard to prepare for this town meeting, and Mr. Lambease will later be taking part in a quick presentation of some of the articles and to answer relevant questions. We have certain rules, procedures for town meeting that I'd just like to review for those of you who are new here. We ask that you abide by the following rules and guidelines during town meeting in order to allow you the opportunity to ask questions, share your opinions, or simply to listen to the debate. Please approach one of the microphones if you'd like to speak, or if you have a question, and the moderator will recognize you at the earliest available moment. Please remember to state your name and address before you begin speaking, so our town clerk can properly record the minutes of the meeting. The microphones are now located in each of the front two aisles. Selectmen, town managers, and department heads also have available microphones right here in the front. Please make sure to keep all comments and questions relevant to the subject matter of the article being discussed. Do not make any personal attacks or bring personalities into debating of an issue. If the moderator believes that a speaker is strained from issues, I will have to direct the speaker to limit his or her portion of the debate to the issue. We also ask that all speakers limit their time to the microphone so that others will have an opportunity to speak and be heard. I understand that many of you may have children at home or other people in your life you may need to contact at some point during this evening. We ask that you please silence your cell phones at this time, and ask that you take any phone conversation out to the lobby in consideration for those who may be sitting near you. In case an emergency arises and we need to evacuate the building, please note the various emergency exits which are available to you. These exits are located in the left and right of the middle of the auditorium, of the front of the auditorium, and in the back row up back of the auditorium. I need to appoint a deputy, a guardian appointed tellers who will help us count. We also have to appoint a deputy moderator for this evening, and therefore, we ask that we vote to approve the appointment of former moderator Kevin R. Donovan as our deputy moderator. Throughout this evening, I remind you that I will ask for all of those in favor to signify by saying aye, and I'll then ask for all those opposed by saying no. So let's take a first example of taking a vote. We're going to vote to appoint Kevin Donovan as our deputy moderator. So all those who are in favor of appointing Kevin R. Donovan as our deputy moderator, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The ayes have a congratulation, Mr. Donovan. Please understand that in order to debate or discuss an item at tonight's time leaning, the subject matter must be listed in the warrant in the form of an article. Tonight, the Finance Committee and others will be presenting their motions to either approve an article as it's originally printed, or to propose new wording with updated information, or to oppose an article, which we call passing over an article. If you have any questions about procedure or how to do something, please feel free to ask me. We will do our best to make sure that we all understand what we're voting on before we actually take a vote and ask you to declare your vote. Before we begin with our review of the articles and the warrant, the moderator would like to recognize our town manager, Scott Lambease, for the purpose of providing you with a summary and general review of our town government and some of the issues to be addressed later this evening. Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Scott Lambease.
So I just want to start, I want to thank a lot of the individuals or all the individuals that come into making this meeting possible. It takes a lot of time, a lot of hours of work, a lot of volunteers, and staff as well. But certainly, I want to thank the Finance Committee, I want to thank the board of selectmen, and I want to thank all of the department heads. We spent a lot of time on this tonight, getting this budget together, or up until tonight. It's actually months of work that goes into this. So I also want to thank all of you, because obviously, we couldn't get it done if you didn't come on tonight, so thank you for that. I'd like to take a moment to thank our state legislative delegation. Representative Allison Sullivan is here, and John Keenan. I want to thank them for their efforts on behalf of the town. They consistently advocate on our behalf, and they provided us with so much needed financial assistance. An earmark that we received from Allison Sullivan, from the state through Allison, was used with the opera funds that the Congressman was speaking earlier, that helped get that generator, the standby power over at the senior center. And we also received through Senator Keenan, $100,000 in economic development money that's going to help us with new Abington business this year. So again, we can't thank all of them, and, you know, obviously, U.S. Representative Stephen Lynch is here. The money that we've gotten through the American Rescue Plan Act, as you've mentioned, we've put it into our parks, our playfields, we're putting it into roadways and equipment that we otherwise would have to either not be able to do it, or we'd have to borrow for it. So this is much-needed money and much appreciated. You'll see some of it, we'll be talking about later tonight, with our store mart infrastructure program, and the commitment that the selectmen and I made a year ago, funding our roadways and those projects. Again, you're going to see a lot more of that this year, and we appreciate all the help coming from logic and from the state. As I was mentioning, you know, all this work went to put together a balanced budget that we presented here this evening. It was no small feat, and it did take a lot of interference and a lot of meetings, so I wanted to definitely thank those community members. You'll see that we have very little borrowing. We have some in our capital plan tonight, and we're proud of our new capital improvement plan. We spent a lot of time with a grant that we got from the state that we used to put together this very comprehensive long-term capital improvement plan. We were lucky enough to have about $2 million in free cash that we could use to fund most of that plan this year, so again, there'll be very little borrowing. One borrowing article that you will see in there is for desperately needed ambulance. This is to replace the oldest one in the fleet, and I'm told that we'll not get it for, so we have that. We need the authorization. These pieces of equipment like this are hard to get, and it's probably 18 months before we would actually see it, so we need the authorization, but I'd like to say that the borrowing would be very long-term. We do have a land purchase on here. This is a piece of property that's next to our police station, and as you may be aware, the fire station, the Deductory Building Committee, they've been working very diligently for quite some time now, and they've got a great plan that they're going to put forth. It's going to take care of two projects at once, two desperately needed projects. It comes with, you know, a significant price tag, but unfortunately, these buildings are in desperate need of being replaced. There are handouts that they were given out as a cable act, but as they hand out, the price tag right now is $50 million. And we do expect that we will have a special town meeting in the fall to discuss this. But information on that project, as well as, you get information on volunteer opportunities, if you're on the committee or aboard, you have to find all of that on our website. You can also find some links if you're looking to sign up for our code red or our quarterly newsletter on our website. Again, I just want to thank you all for being here tonight, and we get on with the business.
Thank you, Mr. Lambease. All right, we are ready to start our town meeting articles. Unless there are any questions, you can see that they're otherwise, like to move on to Article 1. Just get myself situated. Article 1 is the Snow and Ice Council of the town will vote to transfer from bill funds to some of the money to cover the FY 2023 Snow and Ice Council to take any other action relative there to. Moderator recognizes the chairman of the Finance Committee, Dan Eddy, for the motion.
The Finance Committee moves approval of this article and that the sum of $295,000 be transferred from free cash to fund this article.
The Finance Committee makes a motion to approve $295,000, which is an update to the number that was printed two weeks ago in your warrant. Are there any questions on Article 1 before we vote? If not, all those in favor of approving the Finance Committee's motion to approve Article 1, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. It's unanimous. Article 2. Article 2 is the payment of prior year's bills. Mr. Eddy.
The Finance Committee moves approval of this article and that the sum of $478.04 be transferred from the free cash fund to this article.
Any questions on Article 2? If not, all those in favor of approving Article 2, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. It is unanimous. Article 3, sick leave buyback for the water deposit. Mr. Eddy.
The Finance Committee moves approval of this article and that the sum of $35,000 be transferred from water receipts reserved to fund this article.
The Finance Committee makes a motion to approve Article 3. Are there any questions on Article 3? If not, all those in favor of approving the Finance Committee's motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. It's unanimous. I won't try to rush things, but I will try to keep up the tempo, but if you have any questions or a procedure question, please feel free to raise your hand or come to the microphone. Article 4 is operating budget for the town. Propose $65,569,253 to fund all of our services for the town. The Finance Committee has to read a rather lengthy motion for the record before we can take a vote, so the moderator would like to recognize the chairman, Dan Eddy.
The Finance Committee moves that the town appropriate the total sum of $65,569,253 to defray general fund salaries and expenses of the town for FY 2024, as set forth in the detailed budget under the column entitled "FY 2024 Finance Committee Recommendations", and to meet said appropriation, raise and appropriate the sum of $63,870,100 and transfer the total sum of $1,699,153 as follows. Fund 450 cable access enterprise indirect costs, $9,946. Fund 460 golf enterprise indirect costs, $9,248. Fund 470 sewer enterprise indirect costs, $441,379. Fund 490 water enterprise indirect costs, $1,157,580. And further, that the town approve the following special revenue and enterprise funds for fiscal year 2024 budgets, all as set forth at the end of the detailed budget. Appropriate from conservation receipts the total sum of $5,000 to defray the conservation receipts reserved expenses for FY 2024, all as set forth in the detailed budget. Appropriate from cable access enterprise receipts the sum of $302,546, and to appropriate from cable access enterprise retained earnings, the sum of $14,697, to defray the cable access enterprise fund salaries and expenses for FY 2024, with the sum of $9,946, to be appropriated in the general fund, as shown, and allocated to the cable access enterprise fund for funding, all set forth in the detailed budget. Appropriate from golf enterprise receipts the total sum of $499,407, to defray the golf enterprise fund salaries and expenses for FY 2024, with the sum of $90,248, to be appropriated in the general fund, as shown, and allocated to the golf enterprise fund for funding, all as set forth in the detailed budget. Appropriate from the sewer enterprise receipts the total sum of $2,759,274, to defray the sewer enterprise fund salaries and expenses for FY 2024, with the sum of $441,379, to be appropriated in the general fund, as shown, and allocated to the sewer enterprise fund for funding, all as set forth in the detailed budget. Appropriate from waters enterprise receipts the total sum of $3,938,143, to defray the water special revenue fund salaries and expenses for FY 2024, with the sum of $1,157,580, to be appropriated in the general fund, as shown, and allocated to the water enterprise fund for funding, all as set forth in the detailed budget.
Excellent job, Mr. Eddy. Congratulations. I want to thank the longest one, all of the employees of the town accountant and town treasurer's office and the town manager's office for putting all that together. That is the motion to approve the budget. The budget, as I mentioned, is attached to your warrant handout in the last three pages. There are three pages of the budget. Does anyone have any general questions about the budget itself? Otherwise, what I'd like to do is first ask if there are any questions on page 1. If not, we'll move to page 2. If not, we'll move to page 3, and then we'll take a vote to approve the entire budget, all three pages. So are there any questions on any of the items listed in page 1? You want to stand and take the microphone? Please state your name and address.
Could be a why you want to come and talk.
All right, is that microphone on? Please tap that mic. Oh, there it goes. Okay. The question was, how many of your salaries has it increased, and you want an explanation as to why?
10% of the increase.
10%. Moderator recognizes town manager, Scott Lambease.
Just by the contractual obligation. And did you?
Stand here.
Everyone tonight, whoever's talking, any microphone, you want to make sure the microphone's right at your mouth, okay? Just the salaries was the question, right this way?
Yeah, salaries.
So it's aiming right at thank you.
So yeah, it's a contractual obligation.
I was, I was a 10%.
This way, you can move a little bit closer to the microphone. Sorry, these are wireless microphones, and we have to use them as their support.
Did we also incorporate other positions into the budget?
So we also incorporated some other positions into the budget, into my budget that were in other budgets.
Can I just ask for one?
We resolved, I think it was the conservation we brought in, the conservation administrative assistant.
I think planning board, I know that they were looking, I think, for a town planner. There was a lot of talking back and forth, so if we took this money for a town planner, and we can't hire one, because from what I remember on meetings and listening, nobody seems to be wanting to, we'd lose out for anything else if we can't get one, like maybe somebody to help Wayne Norman go out to bid if he's here, and I want to wish him any a little bit. If he goes down, it's a negative, they have a great point. Town has nobody back, they're not following our team, the computer, the tone, anything goes on, unless I'm missing something.
No, if the, if for some reason we were unable to fill that position, you know, we would probably want to look and see why we're having trouble recruiting, and we would deal with it, but we would have to come back to either town meeting or through the Finance Committee to do something different with that money.
So it's kind of stuck there, but we could use maybe for something else until we know whether we're dying, like, do we have any?
Right now, we could not, no. Right now, we could not, but I'm fairly confident that we'll be able to muscle it.
And then I guess maybe I should have asked at the very beginning, looking at the whole budget, and the increase between the school and the town, how sustainable is this budget going forward?
I feel it's very sustainable. I think that, you know, we obviously can't see increases like that year in, year out, but we, every year, what we do is we start off with what we need to do to provide the same level of service and the services the community needs, and then we get together and we decide what we can afford and what we can't afford. So yeah, I think going forward, we're okay, otherwise we wouldn't have proposed it as we have.
Yeah, I know, I listen, I have these members on finance that could ask me questions, and I may reiterate some of what they have to say, because there are, I think, three people, which is unusual for me to say on a finance committee, as I sat there and that happened. And then building maintenance, they're going up quite a bit, I think from 500 to like 700 something, I don't know, what we're going to be meeting.
We have a lot of buildings to maintain.
Exactly. It's nice if you can have a little broken down, but I think this difference is not so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Whiting. Are there any other questions on page 1 of the budget? If not, could John please turn to page 2 of the budget? Are there any questions on page 2? Are there any questions on page two? Seeing none, please turn to page three. This is Whitey.
Question on the police salaries?
The questions on the police salaries. Which is on the top of page two, for anyone who wants to follow along.
So the, the police salaries, uh, you'll see later on in, in the warrant, we have the uh, five-year agreement, if you'll be funding the first year of, and that's where we got the money to fund that. There's a lot of positions in the uh, police line, in the police department, there's, have been remaining on shelf for years, and we don't, we won't be filling them now, we took them out of the budget. Um, but we are also feeding money back into it later in the hour.
Hey, what about the school department? I think they want up eight percent. And I think with these some positions that were on grant money, and they're going to go into the budget, what happens to that grant money? Whether they're going to use that for now?
Questions to the school department? It was, I believe, Mr. Whitey asked, there was a position that was previously funded by grant money, it's now being funded by the budget, what happens to the grant money now? Is that the question?
Yeah, I agree with you. These positions that were on the grant money, they get off of money or something?
Moderator recognizes chairman, sorry, moderator recognizes chairman of the school committee, Mr. Chris Coyle.
Is the question about the um, the money that's currently being funded by the federal grants that's now going into our budget?
And that was, I think, the question that came up on finance committee as well, it was like, we have to, was that $100,000 that was?
I know, yeah, I, I know what you're referring, I still know what you're referring to, I think I can answer that. So the $100,000 that was being discussed is now, that is being funded by the town budget, is proposed anyway, to cover adjustment councils. That $100,000 is being used in majority to keep in funding math that you mentioned is that are in the fifth and sixth grade and seventh and eighth, it's two different positions. And the remaining um, $30,000? Supplies and devices for translation for English language students.
Thank you, Mr. Coyle.
Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Whitey. Any other questions on page two or three of our town budget? Hearing none, we'd like to take a, a vote to approve the finance committee's motion as stated, which essentially approved the budget as presented. All those in favor of approving the FY 2024 town budget as presented in the motion of the finance committee, please, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. The ayes have it. Moving on to Article five, the funding of the capital plan. Mr. Eddy.
The finance committee moves approval of sections A, B, C, D, E, and G in Article five as presented, with the amendment that the funding source for all of the water department's capital plan items listed in section C shall be the water receipts, receipts reserve fund.
Thank you, Mr. Eddy. Let me explain what's going on. Um, in the capital plan, there are five, six, seven sections, A through G. Uh, the fire department's ambulance in section F will be funded by borrowing, and that requires a separate two-thirds vote. So the finance committee's current motion is to approve everything else, which just simply needs a majority vote, just so we can kind of keep things in order. So the motion is to approve A through E plus G, with one update that the water department articles, on the handout in the warrant, it says it's coming from the water undesignated fund balance. There's an update to the name of that, the correct fund. As stated in the motion of the finance committee, it's actually going to be the water receipts reserve fund. The dollar amounts don't change, it's just the accounting to the correct fund. Are there any questions on the finance committee's current motion to approve uh, the items listed in A through E and, and also G? If not, all is in favor of the, is there any question over there? All those in favor of the finance committee's motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. It's unanimous, the ayes have it. Now there'll be a second motion to address uh, item F, which is the purchase of the ambulance. Mr. Eddy.
The finance committee moves approval of section F in Article five to purchase and equip a new ambulance and to meet this appropriation to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the board of selectmen to borrow the sum of $485,000 under general laws, chapter forty-four, or any other enabling authority and issue bonds and notes of the town therefore. And, if I could, uh, so the committee, we actually voted on this, this evening, and so I just want to let you guys know it was not unanimous, we did have one no vote, that was not very clear, so I just want to let everybody know that.
Eight to one vote to approve as per the motion. Moderator like to, uh, recognize the fire chief of the town of Abington, Chief John Nuttall.
Thank you. Well, this is awkward, but I have to actually somewhat ask for some leniency from the town manager, that I don't want to, I want to be very careful, we do not vote to disallow the fire department from purchasing a Ford, as much as, coming from me, that may have been, there's complicated reasons for that, mainly due to the availability of a chassis. We do, we did look at also a Dodge, we did not report a Mercedes, we did not, did not present that, serious accident, that's the only one that's actually an ambulance chassis. So I just want to, if you do approve this, this may not necessarily mean that we're not getting a Ford, as much as we probably will go for Dodge, there's some complicated reasons that could require us to still stay with a Ford so we can have something. Otherwise, we could be looking at anywhere from eighteen to twenty-four, thirty-six months out to get something, as long as we're clear on that.
Thank you, chief. And there is no language in there to limit what brand of ambulance we'll be choosing, the selectman and the treasurer and the town manager, with them consultation of the fire chief, whomever that may be, uh, will, uh, I'm sure make the best decision for the town of Abington. Anything else to be heard on the finance committee's motion to approve the purchase and the funding of the ambulance via borrowing? If not, all those in favor?
I have a question.
Sure. Mr. Haggerty, please take the microphone. Moderator recognizes Mr. Paul Haggerty, Abington resident and member of the finance committee.
Five hundred and five, Sommet Street. Um, I just have a question for the town manager of the board of selectmen, as far, this is additional financing that town is going to do, and we have a draft policy, financial policies, that if we do fund this, would run up against us. So I'd like to just get a commitment from the board of selectmen or the uh, town manager, is when is that policy going to be done? So we can understand when we do find financing like this in the future, what our financial picture truly looks like. Thank you.
Mr. Haggerty? Anyone like to respond to that? Mr. Nemesi, town manager.
Uh, by June thirtieth.
You'll answer by June thirtieth? Twenty twenty-three. Thank you, Mr. Nemesi, thank you, Mr. Haggerty. Anything else to be heard on the finance committee's motion regarding section F of the capital plan? If not, all those in favor of approving, oh, sorry, moderator recognizes Mr. Greg Bellisari.
Uh, one sixty-one Old Farm Road. So we, we purchased an ambulance two years ago, three hundred eighty-five thousand, heavy duty. Uh, it's now four hundred eighty-five thousand, I talked to the chief about it. Uh, it's just a large amount to go from uh, three eighty-five, or three whatever it was, three seventy-five?
Three, forty-eight.
Three fifty, three fifty to four eighty-five. We, in my opinion, as a town, don't need to spend the extra hundreds of thousands of dollars to get the heavy-duty machine. At some point, this arpa money, other funds are going to run out. I do think at some, at some point, we have to be a little bit more fiscally responsible on these things, understanding that the chief is trying to do his best in getting the best deal, but to look at the actual cost of this, uh, with financing, five hundred and thirty to five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it's a lot of money to spend uh, uh, on ambulance, so there's my, uh, my one call.
Thank you, Mr. Bellisari. Anything to be heard? Moderator recognizes the fire chief, John Nuttall.
Thank you. We did just discuss this at length at the finance committee just prior to this meeting. Uh, I don't disagree, I'm actually embarrassed to be asking for the amount of money for the ambulance, this is what they're going for. We're actually requesting less money than some of our area communities for their ambulance, which is similar, which is doing the same mission we are doing. Uh, I know Route eighteen and I know one twenty-three is smooth now, we're still going for the heavy-duty ambulance to withstand not just the bumpy roads, but the workload that is going to go into this ambulance, which literally does not stop running, uh, from the moment they commit the shift, almost the entire time. We have two of them, we bounce back and forth. Each time we get a new ambulance, we try to put the older ambulance, which we have worked a lot out of, these are tired vehicles, it goes down one notch, but it's still just it's busy. We try to keep the third ambulance as a spare, kind of, we don't have that luxury until I get the other one back, which is hopefully in two weeks. Uh, these are very tired vehicles because we, we squeeze a lot of life out of them. So yes, we want to get a very strong, robust, and unfortunately expensive vehicle to last the, the lifetime that we're looking to do, which is typically five years frontline, five years secondary, which is still frontline, and then if we're lucky, five years as a reserve, which we have always done. We're squeezing a lot of life out of these. And if I can very quickly just share with you what I share with the finance committee, another way to look at this is an investment uh, to the town, it's just an expensive purchase. In 2022, the town of Abington transported 1,884 individuals to the hospitals, averaging about $784 in insurance funds coming back from those, which is a total of about $1.4 million. Now, half of all of those transports are done by this ambulance we're asking for, that's about $738,000 a year. If we get ten years out of this, five years frontline, five years in reserve, I'm not even counting the five years as typical, but those ten years would be $7,385,000 for your investment on this very expensive vehicle that we're trying to keep running. We're not like a, a private ambulance company, which they will have a warehouse full of cheap Vian vehicles, one goes down, bring in another one, that goes down, bring in another one. We don't have that luxury. We have no room, we, we barely have enough room to house our three that we have now. There's nowhere else to put them. That's why unfortunately these vehicles are expensive. Uh, the Barrocton Hospital incident that we just had back in Thumpery, we had ambulance that's coming in literally from all over the state, four ninety-five to P-Town, came to Barrocton. Um, we put serious mileage on these ambulances, not just back before social hospital and back. We're also qualified to go to different mutually aid towns, thirty days, certainly, but at our times, we have to have a robust uh, vehicle, that's why we're requesting this type. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Now, is there anything else to be heard on the finance committee's motion for approval of the funding for section F of Article five? Sure. Mr. Eddy.
Daniel Eddy, thirty-seven Vernon Street. Um, so a, a theme personally, and then also with the committee this year and moving into the following years, is, is getting a control of the borrowing, and as Scott has already said, you'll see that, you know, throughout this whole town meeting. Um, I voted yes, uh, to, to borrow, uh, the money for this, uh, because it's, it's really one of the only borrowing items that is actually, as chief said, an investment. Um, not only is it an investment in service for the town, but we actually yield some revenue from, uh, from our town ambulances, so I just wanted to, you know, we just make it clear that we are focused on controlling borrowing, uh, and, you know, why I voted yes for this, for this ambulance.
Thank you, Mr. Eddy. Any other comments on the finance committee's motion? If not, approval of this will require a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of approving the finance committee's motion for, to approve section F, Article five, and the funding as stated in the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. It is a two-thirds vote, uh, the moderator declares. We'll move on to Article six, Article, the motion passes. Article six is the community preservation budget as printed in your warrant. The moderator recognizes the chairman, Mr. Eddy.
The finance committee moves approval of this article as presented.
The finance committee moves approval of Article six as presented. Are there any questions about the proposed community preservation budget? If not, seeing none, all those in favor of approving the finance committee's motion on Article six, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. It's unanimous. Article seven, funding of, uh, student transportation. Mr. Eddy.
The finance committee moves approval of this article and to raise and appropriate the sum of $16,106 to fund this article.
The finance committee's motion is to raise and appropriate the $16,106 to fund the article. Are there any questions on Article seven? If not, all those in favor of approving Article seven in the finance committee's, finance committee's motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. It's unanimous. Article eight, health imperative funding for $5,000. Mr. Eddy.
The finance committee moves approval of this article and to raise and appropriate the sum of $5,000 to fund this article.
Thank you, Mr. Eddy. Any questions on the motion of the finance committee? If not, all those in favor of approving the finance committee's motion for Article eight, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. It's unanimous. Article nine, the ARC or the ARC of the South Shore, funding of $2,500. Mr. Eddy.
The finance committee moves approval of this article and to raise and appropriate the sum of $2,500 to fund this article.
Are there any questions on the finance committee's motion for Article nine? If not, all those in favor of approving the finance committee's motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. It's unanimous. Article ten, Central Street land purchase. Mr. Uh, Eddy will have a motion to read.
The finance committee moves that the board of selectmen is authorized to acquire by gift, purchase, or eminent domain a fee, simple interest in the property located at 199 Central Street, map thirty-two, lot one, for general municipal purposes and/or for public works facility and/or, and/or public safety purposes, including any costs incidental or related thereto, and that the board of selectmen is authorized to enter into any agreements, execute any documents, and take any other action necessary in connection with such acquisition, and further that $175,000 is appropriated for such purpose, and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the board of selectmen is authorized to borrow the sum of $175,000 under general laws, chapter forty-four, or any other enabling authority and issue bonds or notes of the town therefore.
Thank you, Mr. Eddy. That wording is, is required by bond council for the town of Abington. Are there any questions on Article ten, its proposal? Yes, sir. Um, you're not a registered voter of the town of Abington, so.
I know you're the only property, sir, but, but I'm sorry, you're not a, you're not a registered voter unless the town, unless the town meeting would take a vote to. Send you the letter from the county.
One second. Apparently, is it Mr. Montron?
Yeah.
Did I say your name right? He received a letter from town council inquiring if the town could buy the property, and you had said to me before the meeting that you were asked to come or told about this meeting, which is great, and anyone can attend town meeting, but the only people who are allowed to vote to speak at town meeting are registered voters or department heads, uh, and our elected officials. If a non-resident, uh, to speak, town meeting would have to take a vote to allow a non-resident to speak, it's up to town meeting, not to the moderator. Uh, if anyone would like to make a motion to allow Mr. Montron to speak, they can do so, otherwise, um, with all due respect, I can't allow him to speak at our local town meeting.
This is Daniel Eddy, thirty-seven Vernon Street, I'd like to make a motion to allow him to speak.
Mr. Eddy makes a motion to allow Mr. Montron to speak on this article. Anything to be heard on this motion? Mr. DeCarlo, DeCarly, sorry.
Henry DeCarlo, one eighty-seven Central Street, the next door neighbor.
Right in the microphone.
One eighty-seven Central Street, the next door neighbor, and I've been living with this since two thousand and six. Uh, I see no reason why Mr. Montron should speak here tonight, this is a very clear issue, this land is needed for the fire station, most of the neighbors in our neighborhood I could speak, are in favor of this, and we should, uh, move forward with it, there's no reason for him to speak tonight.
Before we go any further, I would like to ask town council, if you don't mind, attorney court vote, um, just want to make it clear that a vote tonight in the affirmative does not effectively buy the property. This only authorizes, as I understand it, the town to either exit negotiations or potentially proceed with eminent domain, which is a legal, uh, procedure that lawyers can deal with, not me. Is that correct? Summary, okay. Just so people know what we're doing, we're not voting to buy the property, we're voting to, to, uh, authorize the selectmen to book, to use up to the 175,000 to potentially negotiate or to go through eminent domain if they take such a vote to do so.
I want to say.
One second, sir. I know, I know, I just got to go through the procedures. Anything else to be heard on Mr. Eddy's motion to allow Mr. Montron to speak?
You can speak if you'd like to.
Daniel Eddy, thirty-seven Vernon. Um, the way I see it, we're voting to allow him to speak so we can hear him, as if he's the property owner, I think that's appropriate, uh, tonight, so, and that's why I brought the motion up.
Thank you, Mr. Eddy. Anything else to be heard on this motion, whether or not to allow, uh, Mr. Montron to speak on behalf of this article? Nothing, uh, so we'll take a vote, of yes vote will allow Mr. Montron to speak, and no vote will unfortunately not allow Mr. Montron to speak. All those in favor of Mr. Eddy's motion to allow Mr. Montron to speak on Article ten, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no.
No.
The ayes have it. Mr. Montron, you have the microphone. If you can speak right into. Mr. Montron, just make sure you speak right close to the microphone so you can hear.
If you face me and talk right into the microphone. I have this property, I've been so hard and worked for this property. I'm minority, I'm North American, I work hard for my family, so what happened, is you know, I just this time, I guess since two thousand sixteen, I fight for this property, the town everything, try to, they try and wait me, that my, someday, I need, okay, everybody, I have, what I have to say, everybody for town, everything, I have a good project for low income, for, for, for town, for town everything, so I work, I have a project already done, just I think last week, try get me done for the city, so I have a ready plan I'm trying, I'm trying to build for town everything. So I don't know why, is it, see this guy, his name is... You know, you see when you...
Okay, John, tell him first, okay.
It's okay. I'm sorry, everybody, you see, I'm talking like this because I'm very hurt. Yes, I hurt me. And so I have my family, I have my family. I work hard.
Thank you, Mr. Montron.
To find my property, where I'm ready to build a couple of houses, I'm ready to build for the town, but ten, ten companies to, for town everything, for low income.
Thank you, Mr. Montron.
I need to tell everybody, I'm ready, everybody, the town everything, vote no.
Mr. Montron urges that you vote no on this Article X. Is there anything else to be heard on Article X?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else to be heard on Article X, the Finance Committee's motion to approve the article as presented? If not, this will require a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of the Finance Committee's motion as stated by Mr. Eddy to approve Article X, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are those opposed say no?
No.
It's a two-thirds vote, the article does pass. Moving on to Article XI. Article XI regards roadway infrastructure improvements. Mr. Eddy.
The Finance Committee moves approval of this article and to raise and appropriate the sum of $500,000 to fund this article contingent upon the successful approval of Plymouth County American Rescue Plan reimbursement of a like amount.
Thank you, Mr. Eddy. Mr. Lambie AC, we'd like to just explain the purpose of that wording regarding the Plymouth County American Rescue Plan reimbursement. Thank you.
Yeah, as we had discussed earlier, Congressman, we do have a certain amount of money that was allocated to the town directly for the American Rescue Plan Act funds. There's also funds that were given to Plymouth County. Plymouth County has allocated a certain amount of that to be used by the citizens and towns, but one thing that they do require is that we have a town meeting vote to actually use those. And one of the allowable uses is for those funds is directly for infrastructure and stormwater management. It's something you may remember last year, we put, I think, a half a million dollars towards the water pump and the T-FAS remediation projects. So we're going to continue to do that. It's part of our commitment to, you know, to work on the roadways, work on the infrastructure, and get out of on those things, so.
Thank you, Mr. Lambie AC. Are there any questions, comments regarding this Article XI and the Finance Committee's motion to approve? If not, all those in favor of approving the Finance Committee's motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no? It is unanimous. Article XII, vote to accept Mashfield into the Social Vocational Technical School, the regional school district. Mr. Eddy.
The Finance Committee moves approval of this article as presented.
The Finance Committee makes a motion to approve this article. Are there any questions or anything to be heard on this Article XII? If not, all those in favor of approving the Finance Committee's motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no? It is unanimous. Article XIII, the funding of union contracts. The Finance Committee Chair has a motion regarding the dollar amounts and the funding of the three contracts. Mr. Eddy.
The Finance Committee moves approval of this article and that the sum of $330,000 be raised and appropriated to fund and implement the first year of the collective bargaining agreement with the Abington Firefighters Local 2080. And further, that the sum of $420,000 be raised and appropriated to fund and implement the first year of the collective bargaining agreement with the Abington Police Union Mascop Local 476. And further, that the sum of $18,000 be raised and appropriated to fund and implement the first year of the collective bargaining agreement with the Abington Police Union Mascop Local 4928.
Thank you, Mr. Eddy. Is there anything to be heard on this Article XIII in the Finance Committee's motion to approve the three contracts? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no? It is unanimous. Article XIV, Veterans Property Tax Workoff Abatement Program. Mr. Eddy.
The Finance Committee moves approval of this article as presented.
The Finance Committee makes a motion to approve. Anything to be heard, any questions on Article XIV? If not, all those in favor of approving the Finance Committee's motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no? It is unanimous. Article XV, local option to establish designated safety zones. Mr. Eddy.
The Finance Committee defers to the recommendation of the Town Manager and Board of Selectmen for this article.
The Finance Committee defers to a motion by the Board of Selectmen. Are there any comments from Town Manager? Moderator recognizes the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen and Abington resident, Alex Bazanson.
So the article is to see if the town will vote to accept provisions of MGL, Chapter 90, Section 17C, which will allow the Board of Selectmen to establish a speed limit of 25 miles per hour on any roadway inside a thickly settled or business district in the town, or on any way that is not a state highway or take any other actions relative thereto. So the reason we want to do this is because if we get a complaint from residents for speed, we have to have a study, and then we have to have the state approve it. This will give the Board of Selectmen the ability to prove it if we deem necessary. So I motion to make a, I move to approve this article as presented.
Mr. Bazanson makes a motion to approve Article XV, Article XV, yes, as presented. Are there any questions on Article XV? Seeing none, all those in favor of Mr. Bazanson's motion to approve Article... Oops, sorry, question. Moderator recognizes Mr. Greg Belzerian.
161 Old Farrow. So who would be making the rules for this?
Board of Selectmen would be input from the police and fire department.
Perfect. And how many times do we try to go around a specific thing in order to give the power to the Board of Selectmen?
What specifically are you talking about?
Any other instance? I think you're asking, how many times do we take a vote to take the state out of the equation and leave it as a local decision?
Correct.
Right into the microphone, Alex.
The town has lots of local options. The problem with the way it is now, it can take months or years before something is done. And we've seen that on several roads that we've tried to make one-way or ban heavy trucks. And it's an impact on the residents by allowing us to do this with the input from the police and fire departments. It impacts it much, much more for the rest.
Do we have input on the police and fire departments?
I don't think they...
Would either the police chief or fire chief like to speak as to whether they support or reject or have no comment?
Moderator recognizes Police Chief, Chief Delpala.
I fully support this law article.
Thank you, Chief. Any other questions? Mr. Belzerian, thank you for your questions. Thank you, Mr. Bazanson. Any other questions from the audience regarding the Finance Committee's motion, I'm sorry, Mr. Bazanson's motion to approve Article XV as presented? Mrs. Whitey.
I don't oppose 25. I understand what we're trying to do here, and I understand it's great that the police department backs us up. Do we have any teeth in it if we do this? I mean, do we have people that have done the other thing monitoring this? Do we have enough resources to be able to do this? Because I mean, we have things posted 30 now, and people are lying by me now, Washington Street's doing 40 and 50, and nobody else can monitor. I mean, we can do all the hard, private things, but what teeth are we going to have? What outcomes are we going to get out of this?
Thank you, Mrs. Whitey. Moderator recognizes Mr. Bazanson.
Hopefully, we're going to get slower cars and stuff. I mean, the police are doing a great job with what they have, and that's probably, that's one reason that we've given them a great contract, so they can do more for the town. We've got a great police department now. Things are going smoothly, and I think they'll be able to handle it.
Thank you, Mr. Bazanson. Thank you, Mrs. Whitey.
Quick question. Does it require the input from the police chief with Article XV? The language in the article doesn't necessarily show or require that the name be...
We're listening to a question from State Representative Allison Sullivan Almeida. Asking, as a resident also of Abington, the question was, does the article require the input of the police or fire department? Right?
The article doesn't state that, but anytime we've done any of these things with the state or we've done a couple of heavy trucks and banning trucks and whatever, we get the input of the police. It's not in the article. You're free to amend it.
Do you have a motion to amend the article?
No. It'd be out of order. We can't amend the article. The adoption of a state statute as written, so you take it or leave it basically. Per Town Council. Moderator recognizes Mr. Jack Bailey.
625 Wythe Street. I leave the law states, the business districts, 25 miles an hour. Is that correct?
Mr. Bailey asks if the law states that business districts aren't 25 miles an hour. I don't know if anyone can answer that question off the top of their head.
My knowledge, yeah, the center is posted 45 miles an hour as a business district. The question within me, where are the business districts?
Moderator recognizes Town Council Greg Corvo. Do you want to elucidate?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Moderator. So the statute says that the Board of Selectmen has the authority to establish a 25 mile an hour speed limit in a thickly settled or business district. So the Board of Selectmen actually has two decisions that they're authorized to make here. The first is to determine what is a thickly settled or business district, and then once they make that determination, to decide whether or not the speed limit within that district should be 25 miles per hour. Some towns that accept this statute have designated their entire towns as thickly settled or business districts. Other towns do it on a street-by-street or an area-by-area basis. So that's something that is going to be up to the discretion of the selectmen in consultation with the fire regulations.
Thank you, Attorney Corvo. Anything else to be heard? Moderator recognizes Mr. Mary Jo Framing. You can move that microphone down.
My question is, we have the police, and maybe you signed it, they put up, and it wasn't, you know, the speed limit. It always went around the accident, or 139, the speed stayed 25. Now, how are we going to do these speed developments? Are they going to be considered 25? Are you going to do, I can think, the major roads, or what about the developments? That's why the construction area does, or up, up, up of the sleeping streets. I don't see how this can be done. I really don't. I think more patrol, patrol, what patrol, yes, I agree with that. But I mean, we're going to be following along the whole town, going to, going to town, I guess, and I just, I can't do this. In fact, I don't think it should be up to the woodwork to decide. I don't know what to say.
Thank you, Mrs. Framing. Mr. Corvo, do you want to add anything? Or, yes, Attorney, yeah, Attorney Corvo, recognized by the moderator.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Moderator. Just to clarify, this authority only applies to roads that are town roads, not state highways. So a road like Route 18 or 123 would not apply to this. That would still be something that would have to be established by the state.
Thank you, Attorney Corvo. Anything else to be heard on this Article XV? Where? Oh, yes, Mrs. Whitey.
Sorry, I don't want to keep coming up here, but if the selectmen decide to do this, and it's going to be thickly settled or whatever, I need to do it like neighborhood to neighborhood. So let's see, on current front drive, we can drive at 20, and another road is 25, or maybe to somewhere up to 30, and then go up. How do you want to figure this out? So that it really makes sense for the town? Because I mean, I know Randolph does, and I've gone to Randolph, I think it's 200 over there, and not one person follows this anywhere. But how you going to hand, there's a need, what streets are going to be what?
Thank you, Mrs. Whitey. Moderator recognizes Mr. Bazanson.
The vote tonight does not change the speed limit. This would be if someone presented it to us on a case-by-case basis, if a neighborhood presented it to us, it would give us the ability to change it if we saw it. This isn't changing anything tonight, except giving us a faster way to satisfy the residents.
And if I could just add, ladies and gentlemen, in the article or in the statute, it does allow the speed to go to 25 miles an hour, but can't go less than that. Correct, Town Council? Thank you, it's not any yes. Anything else to be heard on this Article XV? Mr. Eddy.
Daniel Eddy, 37 Vernon. If you're familiar with Vernon Street, if you ever cut, you know, through Route 18 to get to J.P. Ryan's, and you know, I would like it to go a bit slower, and I'll always advocate any state power, if we can bring it down to the local level, I think that's going to be a good thing for us. But in spirit of what Allison tried to bring up, I do think it's important that we have some process involved in this, that there's notification, that there's a conversation that happens around, you know, if your street is going to be one of those streets that changes. And I don't see that written here in the article. I don't see input required, you know, by the police here. So I would support this, like I said, bring the power down to the local level if there's a process, you know, clearly defined here.
Thank you, Mr. Eddy. Anything else to be heard? Yes, moderator recognizes Mr. Joseph Shea. You can restate your name and address, sir.
Joseph Shea, 311 Road. If Mr. Eddy's comments, I assume it would have to be voted at a meeting of the Board of Selectmen. This changed. That would have to be, as the open meeting law, that would have to be posted as an agenda item, and I assume that most Board of Selectmen will make sure that people are notified, but it would have to be public information. They could just not do it without a vote at a meeting. This would have to be on the agenda for me.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. Anything else to be heard on Article XV? Okay. So we'll take a vote on Mr. Bazanson's motion to approve Article XV as presented. So a yes vote will approve this article. All those in favor of approving Mr. Bazanson's motion on Article XV, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no?
No.
All right, we need a majority vote. I'm going to do it, I'm going to ask you to raise your hands when I ask you for your votes. So all those in favor of approving Article XV as motioned by Mr. Bazanson, please signify by raising one hand. Okay, you can put your hands down. All those opposed, please signify by raising your hand. The ayes have it. It passed with a majority vote. Article 16, match grant funding for fire department radios. Moderator recognizes the Chairman of the Finance Committee, Mr. Dan Eddy.
The Finance Committee moves approval of this article and to transfer the sum of $16,038.91 from free cash to fund this article.
The Finance Committee makes a motion to approve this article with free cash, and as I understand, if the town approves this, it entitles us to the balance of over $300,000 in grant money. Is that correct? Thank you, this is correct. Anything to be heard on this article, the motion by the Finance Committee, Article 16? If not, all those in favor of approving the Finance Committee's motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no? It's unanimous. Article 17, Washington Street bike lane and pedestrian improvements. Mr. Eddy.
The Finance Committee moves approval of this article and to transfer the sum of $69,000 from free cash to fund this article.
Are there any questions or anything to be heard on Article 17 in the Finance Committee's motion? Mrs. Whitey.
I feel like we should just stand here for the whole thing. What is this all about? Because I live on the Washington Street, and I see people speeding around here. Are we going to do better sidewalks? How wide is this thing going to be? What is this going to be doing? And I guess the reasons are, as I said, I just gave an act of waiting to happen. We have a bike path, the street's not big enough.
What is this one to do? And I guess the reason for, because I said, if I just gave an accident weight to have and we have a bike path, the street's not big enough, we pull over to turn on the current front drive, and I've got people going around who do 40, half of them in sidewalks, see more people almost sit there, and I'm sure other places we want to do it. So, what are we going to do here?
Thank you, Mrs. White. The moderator recognizes the DPW Director, Mr. John Stone.
We received a $500,000 grant to upgrade a portion of sidewalks on Washington Street and create a bike path. We do believe there's enough room on both sides to do it. So, this is just on the design project. It's still early in the process.
The question is, what parts of Washington Street are there?
Concrete sidewalks with granite curbing from first entrance of Beaver Brook to Langley and then bike path, four foot wide, for the whole length of Washington.
How much street is left?
Yep, thank you. We're going to go through the moderator, please. Mr. Stone, you have the mic. Go ahead.
Yes, it's going to be a four-foot wide bike path from 18 to 18. So, in other words, Upper Washington to Lower Washington.
Or someone would say, from Tricky's to the Church on the Hill on Washington Street. Okay? Moderator recognizes Mrs. White.
So, I'm that little area, so I'm just like you said, because of current drive, and that whole area there is just a disgusting sidewalk with dirt on the side. Anything to drive up and around?
It's going to be a brand new, it's going to be a brand new concrete sidewalk with granite curbing.
All right.
Correct. Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Stone. Yes, ma'am. Name and address, please.
Melissa Font, 26 Coleman Street. My question is, is there certainty that the ADA pedestrian improvement will be included unless there's ADA compliance and review in the plans?
Thank you, Ms. Font. Mr. Stone.
Definitely.
Definitely, yes. Any other questions on Article 17?
Question from Mr. Haggerty, Paul Haggerty. Oh, what is it, 515 Summer Street? Yes, 515. 515 Summer Street. I just wondered, putting the bike path in there, what is the impact to events that are happening at the, in that area? Can you put a bike path in?
Moderator recognizes the DPW Director, Mr. John Stone.
We're actually going to create diagonal parking in front of the rodeo, so they'll add a few more spots, so it's not really going to take away any.
But, but does that fit, if I look at the chief of police there, as far as when you extend down to the AB and down towards Langley, people parking there with a bike lane, is there any issues for people to park there if there's a bike lane? Is there any violations?
I don't think so. But we're still early in the process. We haven't even done much of that. That's what the sign is for.
Right, but we know where the bike path is going. It's going on that side. So, it's on the shoulder, but I don't know, does that create an issue for people when they park at Thanksgiving football game? And it's all lined up, they're just, have we looked into that? Is there an impact to now, there's a, there's a bike path and you're parking a bike path? Does that change how it needs to be policed?
Question is, will creation of a bike path along Washington Street interfere with parking along Washington Street? This is for, actually, money to design the bike path.
This area is money to design the bike path and the granite curbing and the ADA compliance.
Money to design the bike path and the curbing.
We bought the grant $500,000 already.
The grant is in hand. Everything has to be designed.
We just have to design it.
Chief, would you like to speak at all?
Is a specific topic hasn't been approached yet, but generally, you cannot park in a dedicated bike lane.
The answer is generally, you cannot park in a dedicated bike lane, so I guess we'll have to design it the most efficient way possible.
What's wrong?
Unless it's approved. But I'm not trying to sway him up, sorry. Do whatever you want to do. Sorry, I'm tapping away on that. Moderator would like to recognize Mrs. O'Neill.
Colonel Hunt Drive. When the bike lane, walking lane was put on Lincoln Boulevard, there was significant flooding on Washington Street. Is this survey and this study going to include water runoff and the management of that as a result of this construction?
Thank you, Mrs. O'Neill. Mr. Stone, do you have a microphone behind you too, if you'd rather? Where do you like? Right into the mic.
Yes, it is. Definitely.
The asterisk would be included in the design. Yes, sir. State your name and address.
Yes.
639 Randolph Street.
Why are we getting bike paths? What is the bike path? Why are we starting to do bike paths? Maybe not. The reason why I say this, I've lived in this town for 20 years, I could probably count on one year how many bicycles I've seen in this town. I think it wastes my money, and I want to know why we are starting to put these bike paths on these tiny roads.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Stone.
First of all, it's a grant, as was Lincoln Boulevard. And I have to disagree. I've seen plenty of people using bikes, kids going to school on bikes, and it's a grant, like I said.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am. This one.
On 74 Orange Street, as some people works here in this building and drives to school every day up Washington Street from Orange Street to cross over to go to middle school, there are lots of children riding their bikes to school. I wish mine would, but he's lucky he gets a ride. Seeing this bike path, I think would be amazing for these kids. It's just, the more safety we can have for these kiddos, the better, and I'd love to see more of it. So, thank you for doing this.
Thank you, Mrs. Collins. Any other questions or comments from Article 17? Yes, sir. Please state your name and address.
Ken Coyle, 222 High Street. Just a comment to the Board of Selectmen, this is probably going to be your first 25 mile an hour, so.
Thank you, Mr. Coyle. Anything else to be heard on Article 17? If not, the motion from the Finance Committee is to recommend approval of this article and to transfer the sum of $69,000 from free cash to fund the article. All those in favor of the Finance Committee's motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no? The ayes have it. Article passes. Article 18, Police Department Separation from Civil Service. Mr. Eddy?
The Finance Committee defers to the recommendation of the Town Manager and Board of Selectmen for this article.
The Finance Committee defers to the Town Manager and Board of Selectmen. Moderator recognizes the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Bazanson.
I move to pass over this article as Town Council recommended that this issue would be better addressed in the form of amendment to our town charter at future town meetings. As you all know, we have a charter committee that will probably be presenting next town meeting, so this article would be in there probably. So, the motion is to pass over this time.
Thank you, Mr. Bazanson. Mr. Bazanson makes a motion of the Board of Selectmen to pass over this article, which would be essentially reject the article. A yes vote would be to pass over. Any questions on Mr. Bazanson's motion to pass over this article? If not, all those in favor of passing over this article, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no?
No.
The ayes have it. Articles 19 through 23, our zoning articles. I'd like to recuse myself, because I took part in some of the public hearings for this, and invite Deputy Moderator, Mr. Kevin Dunham. Before he gets the microphone, I do want to shut up and thank you, Kevin Tocchi, and to our three cameramen who are putting their time in today to record this for all the residents at home, related playback. Tony Moquid, who's helping with the PowerPoint projector here, and J.B. Hoy, who's our outstanding custodian and director of everything in this building to help us get everything organized. A lot of people go to get things, to work together, get things done, and I'd also like to thank our tellers and our ushers tonight for their quality of services. Thank you very much, everyone. I'd like to turn the microphone over to Kevin Dunham.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Having on Articles 19 to 23, their amendments to the zoning bylaw, I'm going to ask the Assistant Town Planner, Liz Shea, if she could give a brief report, a synopsis on all those articles, and then we'll move through them individually. Ms. Shea?
Dunham. Good evening. My name is Liz Shea, and I'm the Assistant Town Planner. I'd like to take a quick moment to give you the Cliff Notes version of the next five articles. In August 2022, I and the DPW staff consultants from Sanborn had to discuss improvements to our MS4 stormwater permit through changes to our bylaws and regulations. The consultants from Sanborn had reviewed all the town's land use regulations and provided us with recommendations. All of these recommendations were to improve our load impact development and green infrastructure. These changes are things like adding green roofs to treat stormwater runoff or encouraging the use of previous materials for parking under certain conditions. These recommendations were then divided into zoning changes that needed a town meeting vote and those that were part of amending the subdivision rules and regulations. The zoning changes are before you this year. Mr. Dunham.
Thank you, Ms. Shea. Article 19, relating to zoning, amending the zoning bylaws relating to sand and gravel operations. Chair recognizes the Chairman of the Finance Committee, Mr. Eddy.
The Finance Committee defers to the recommendation of the planning board.
Finance Committee defers to the planning board. Chair recognizes Mr. Shea.
Moves approval of this article as presented.
Mrs. Shea moves approval of Article 19 as presented in the warrant. This requires a two-thirds vote. Is there any questions on Article 19 as presented in the warrant? If not, all those in favor of Article 19, kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no? The ayes have it, it's a two-thirds vote. Article 20, reductions on parking law pavement. Chair recognizes Mr. Eddy.
The Finance Committee defers to the recommendation of the planning board.
The Finance Committee defers to the planning board. Ms. Shea?
The planning board moves approval of this article as presented.
The planning board, Ms. Shea, recommends approval of Article 20 as pointed in the warrant. Is there any questions on Article 20 relating to the reductions in parking law pavement, amendments to the zoning bylaws? If not, all those in favor of Article 20, kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Two-thirds vote, Chair declares two-thirds vote on Article 20. Article 21, landscape buffer strips along parking lots. Chair recognizes Mr. Eddy, Chairman of the Board.
The Finance Committee defers to the recommendation of the planning board.
Mr. Eddy, defers to the planning board. Ms. Shea?
Moves approval of this article as presented.
Ms. Shea moves approval of Article 21 as presented. Any discussion on Article 21? If not, all those in favor of Article 21, kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Article 21 passes by a two-thirds vote. Article 22, relating to green roofs. Chair recognizes Mr. Eddy.
The Finance Committee defers to the recommendation of the planning board.
Chair recognizes Ms. Shea.
Moves approval of this article as presented.
Ms. Shea moves approval of Article 22 as presented in the warrant. Any questions on Article 22? If not, all those in favor of amending Article 22 as presented in the warrant, kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, Chair declares a two-thirds vote. Article 23, preservation of mature trees. Chair recognizes Mr. Eddy.
The Finance Committee defers to the recommendation of the planning board.
Chair recognizes Ms. Shea.
The planning board moves approval of this article as presented.
Ms. Shea moves approval of Article 23 as presented in the warrant. Is there any questions on Article 23? If not, all those in favor of Article 23, kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, Chair declares a two-thirds vote.
Thank you, Mr. Dunham, and thank you, Ms. Shea. Before we go to Article 24, our final article, I did want to let you know that as you leave the auditorium tonight, the Board of Health has some swag bags if you'd like to take some away home, some public health supplies. Also, a couple of upcoming townwide events. April 15th, there's a large yard sale to be held at North School for the benefit of the Celebrate Abington Committee, and if you would like to have your own yard sale in your own house, you can connect with the people at AbingtonCelebrates@gmail.com, and they're sending out a flyer with a list of other yard sales that people can connect with on April 15. Also coming up, town elections on April 29th at the Beaver Brook Gymnasium, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Make sure you vote on April 29th. And circle the date of June 10th for the planned fireworks by Abington Celebrates.